The January meeting of the Collinswood Board of Education is now called to order. This meeting has been appropriately advertised as required by law. Roll call please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yeah.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Caden?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Mrs. Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, religion, and justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Being as we had no executive session this evening, we will move to Section 3 on our agenda. Is there a motion for the Board to enter Committee of the Whole? Is there a second?
All in favor?
I know.
Okay. And for our Committee of the Whole, we have asked the Board members to read the introduction and Chapter 2 of our study book, Building Great School Board Superintendent Teams. And Ms. Caden will take the lead on this.
Okay, so I put together a kind of a slideshow presentation that if everybody wants to look at it on their computers so that we can actually see what we're talking about, but all be able to have a conversation. It's under Committee of the Whole Board Member Topics. So you should be able to find it. And it's titled Cosby O E Professional Learning Book Club. Thought that was a nice title for us. So I'm just going to quickly run through, not that I don't think everyone read the chapters, but just quickly run through what the overview of the introduction was and what we're going to then start to talk about with Chapter 2. So the what to expect in this book, the introduction kind of outlines how they divide the book into two different sections. The first five or so chapters talk about teamwork and leadership strategies to ensure a successful school board superintendent team. And then the latter half of the book talks about, and gives some pretty helpful tips about a team approach to the strategic and evaluative functions of school district leadership. And then with each chapter, there are professional development activities to promote effective teamwork. Some of them are more useful than others. You are welcome that we're not doing a truth seat or two truths and a lie session today. I thought that wouldn't be so right for a public board meeting. But they're helpful team building activities throughout.
So I don't think she's not going to make you do it at some point.
Maybe at the retreat. So what I wanted to focus on today though was Chapter 2 because it's, I feel like it's timely. It talks about new team member orientation. And since this is the first official public meeting for two of our Board members, this seemed like a good place for us to start. The first chapter just talks a lot about the legal reasons why you would want a local control of a school board. And since I don't really feel like that's super applicable to Collinswood, I don't think anyone's arguing that we shouldn't have local control, I thought we would jump to Chapter 2. So what I found, well, first of all, what we all know or are about to find out tonight as they sit here for the first time is that there's no trial period for Board members. There's no apprenticeship program where Board members can kind of learn what they're doing. It's all trial by fire, which is, you know, a super fun way to run things. The National School Board Association had done a study in 2006 that found that new Board members often need about two years, sometimes even a little bit more before feeling comfortable as a Board member, being past that two-year mark, but not a whole lot past. I can say that rings very true to me. And that they also found that for a Board to operate at peak effectiveness, every Board member should have at least two years' experience. And for Boards like ours, where now we've had quite a bit of turnover in the past few years, and with the exception of Fiona, and I guess most of us don't have a whole lot more than two years of experience, that doesn't mean that we can't be effective. It just means that orientation and onboarding is all the more important. And getting that process started sooner rather than later and kind of developing this culture, which I think we're doing a really good job of, where, you know, we reach out to each other, we reach out to Mrs. Coleman and Dr. Oswald with questions. That helps the process quite a bit. And Dr. Oswald and Mrs. Coleman always meet with the new Board members before reorganization meetings to kind of go over the logistics and what the different committees do and everything like that. But I know Fiona and I have talked in the past about wanting to, and we attempted it, but busy schedules are always tough, to find ways to take that process even a step further, to talk through some of the Board culture sorts of things that you, if you want to know when you should ask a question or what's supposed to happen in a meeting, you would know that sooner rather than later. So that's what I thought we could talk about today. So if you go to the one that says Common New Member Questions, which was in the chapter anyway, I thought this could be our discussion part. Kind of go through and talk about what are some of the common questions that some of us may have even not being a brand-new Board member. And this kind of gets to, it's nothing that's for sure required, it's more how does our Board work? So the first question is, how should the Board operate in a public meeting? When is it okay to speak and when isn't it? This would be a great example. Right now, Committee of the Whole is a time when we kind of instituted this half-hour period where we could all speak freely and have it be more of a conversation as opposed to we're just voting on different measures. So that would be one place where we are definitely encouraged to speak more freely. But did you want to add anything to that part?
I just wanted to add that as a Board member, we're in positions where we're all entitled to have our own opinion, but once the majority makes a decision, it is your responsibility to be committed to the Board decision. So that's, if you're going to have to possibly support a Board decision that you didn't necessarily vote for, and it's your job to support it, you have to have the opportunity to have your voice heard. And that's what Robert's Rules is based on, for everybody to have their voice heard. So we have built a lot of the Robert's Rules, we have our Robert's Rules built right into our agenda. But there are always opportunities for you to ask questions. We have it built in. When we make a motion, after we have a motion and a second, I make a statement that says, "Are there any questions or comments from Board members?", which just sort of sounds like, you know, standard operating statement that I make, right? Standard operating procedure. But really, that is the opportunity for someone to make an amendment to a motion or ask questions because what you're voting on, you have to be completely clear on. And so that is truly your invitation and your opportunity to ask questions. We don't have a lot of opportunities. The opportunity is there, but it doesn't arise a lot where we make amendments to motions because we've already discussed it the previous week in committee meetings. So unless there's a typo, we rarely make amendments unless it's a particularly contentious issue.
And so that kind of covered the protocol for making the motion, which is a little bit of a Robert Tools thing anyway, and then how does a Board member speak to the motion? So maybe we go through the last three questions and if anybody wants to speak to any of them in particular, or feels like something that they've learned on the Board would be helpful. When is discussion permissible? What are the ramifications of a non-unanimous vote? And what is the procedure for bringing up an issue before the entire Board? We're all listed as Common New Member Questions that don't always get covered in the general orientation. So we already talked, obviously no one but Fiona and I currently are talking, but anybody can jump in anytime they want in right now. And then also committees are the times, right, when we have a lot of open, or it's all open discussion about all of the various items that are on the agenda and that it's important to look at. The agendas for the other committees because that's a great time to double-check or ask for clarification about something that's not clear to you, even if you're not serving on that particular committee. And then the ramifications of a non-unanimous vote is, I don't know if anybody wants to talk to that. I mean, we don't all have to vote yes every time. We shouldn't if that's not how we feel. And I mean, at the end of the day, I guess it's, as long as it's a majority, the vote passes. And then I guess it goes to what Fiona said, if you were someone that voted against it, but the vote passes, it's still passed. So it's kind of our responsibility to uphold that regardless of whether I guess you personally agree with it.
So being as we work in committees, are there any Board members that have concerns or comments about the way we operate in committees and the way we communicate with each other throughout the committees? Anyone have any comments or spark any discussion on that?
It's something that I didn't understand until I took a seat on the school board last year, how the committee process worked. And so the public understands, we do go through everything on this agenda and we all speak plainly and clearly and we do a lot of debates that you may not hear in public in those committees. So I think that's an important thing that people should understand.
I'm not clear what happens to notes or minutes from committee meetings. Are they public record? Do they exist somewhere?
So in the past, we haven't taken specific notes from the committee meetings because the committee meetings are based on this agenda. So any notes that get taken get added to this agenda for us to see. And then it gets finalized in this meeting. So you can look back at those now.
So, well, I was just going to add, for instance, you know, under each committee agenda towards the bottom for our Board docs, when we sign in, there's a Discussion Item section. So if you go back after the committee has met, there are notes there about what was discussed. Because those are not necessarily always things we're going to vote on this month, but you can see what was discussed and what was decided in that part as well.
Right. And definitely if any Board members are confused or unsure about something that they see in other committees meetings, you can definitely reach out to the Chair or myself or Dr. Oswald or Ms. Caden for clarification on that. Reagan and I also, as of this month, instituted committee chair notes. And they're basically highlights of the meetings. We do have those compiled for January, but we're still working out when they're going to be posted. We would also like to post them publicly. So you will hear those highlights this evening verbally, but we also plan in the future, very soon, to have those posted so that Board members and the public can see the highlights, really in layman's terms, of what we're doing instead of just an itemized list of Item 6.2, Item 6.3, Item 6.4, blah, 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 right? The highlights of what's really happening. And that will also allow the public to ask more questions.
I was just going to say, I noticed when I was reading that it said something that should, would be helpful is a personnel overview, personnel, I think I read it, personnel overview? I don't know if that exists in terms of like, because I know when I started, it was just like a blur and I didn't know a lot of the people. And then there's, you come to a meeting and there's an administrator who's giving a presentation, and I'm not sure who that person is, and you know, it's kind of overwhelming. So it might be helpful to kind of have some sort of a chart or something like that of like, this is this person and they do this job. So like, something like that might be helpful for new members coming on, just to have like a, some sort of chart to refer to.
Right. That's a good point, and that's probably something that gets taken for granted by those of us who are more familiar.
Yeah. If you don't have kids, you know, if you have kids in elementary, but not in middle of high school, you don't know some of these faces and people.
Does that make sense? The only one we didn't really hit, what is the procedure for bringing up an issue before the entire Board? I guess, I was just trying to, if anybody else wanted to jump in instead of me, that's fine.
Well, because we do work in committee, if you have an issue that you would like to bring up, it most likely would start in a committee. If for some reason you felt like it had to come before the entire Board, you could do that in Committee of the Whole. That would really be the only place you could bring that up. But most likely, if you had a concern, it would start in committee. And then the committee, if the committee wasn't going to make a decision, or if it was something that you wanted to start in committee and bring to the entire Board, you could certainly make that happen. So it's just a matter of conversing with your committee chair. There are, you know, books and books on Robert's Rules. The more you read them, the more confusing they get. Like I said, a lot of the Robert's Rules are already built in a more simplistic way, right into the format of our meeting. But they're, you don't have to wait or feel unsure to speak. All you have to do is ask to be recognized. I found online through New Jersey School Boards Association, it's actually called a cheat sheet, of Robert's Rules, which I'll probably, I thought about giving to everyone at retreat or sooner. And it just is an opportunity of if you needed to, you wanted to amend a motion. But again, that's something that most likely we would have discussed in committee. But if not, you do have the opportunity. If you don't feel comfortable voting on a motion, if it's a contentious motion, we might have to change something, amend something. Just because you make that amendment or suggestion doesn't mean it's going to happen. You have to get someone else to second it. So there has to be at least two of you to make an amendment to that, and then that amendment would have to get voted on. You could also ask the motion to be sent back to committee for further study. You could also just table the motion to be discussed at another time. There's a whole list, I have a list on my phone of like 12 or 15, but there's even many more than that that you have the opportunity to do. But most likely, that's not going to arise because we have had our discussions in the past. But if you have questions about something that you're coming to, to vote on, reach out to someone so that you have full clarification on what you're voting on. And if something does not sit right with you during the meeting, you do have the opportunity for your voice to be heard. Just, you know, ask to be recognized and then make your motion. We can talk more about that at retreat. I'll give those cheat sheets to everybody.
So I guess retreat would be another place also where you could bring things through to the entire Board.
I guess the bottom line is, everybody should feel free to ask questions. You should never feel like there's a foolish question. You should never feel apprehensive about asking a question even in public, you know? To sit here unsure about voting on something and to say, "Oh, I should have asked that last week." I mean, we're all human, so you could ask the question in public. It's probably good. Other Board members may have the same question, and certainly members of the public might have a question as well. So never feel like there's a foolish question. And if you're unsure or conflicted or unable to vote on something, you always have the opportunity to not vote and you can just abstain. So you have a lot of options and power as a Board member. It's not just people sitting here that are in charge. We facilitate the meeting, but we're not in charge of the meeting, so.
And then just the last thing before I wrap up. If you have the opportunity, I know I already talked to Sarah and Syria about this before, but NJSPA, actually, their new member orientation is kind of useful, certainly more so than the online version, because that one, you just kind of sit and look through it for no other reason than just to talk to other people who are going through it at the same time and realize like, oh, it's okay that I kind of sit here and feel like, oh my God, I have no idea what's happening right now. And that you just learn a lot about what other school boards do and what they do, a super cheesy role play of Robert's Rules that is pretty terrible, but at least you kind of have a better understanding of what's going on. So if possible, I have found that to be pretty helpful. But the bottom line of all of us talking about this today is that, you know, it's kind of emphasizing the team approach, that you don't feel like you've got to have it all figured out, you can't ask any questions, because we've all been at the spot where, you know, we don't really know exactly what's happening. And so, you know, ask somebody else. That's the whole point. So kind of getting, wrapping things up and then, you know, moving from that is, the next chapter that we're going to read is about the team members' roles and responsibilities to make, because that gets very confusing and complicated often, to know whose job it is, the superintendent, the school board to, you know, the superintendent administers the schools, the school board sets policy. But then when it gets down to the nitty-gritty, it's helpful to really outline what those roles and responsibilities are so that there isn't any gray area and so that you can, we can all work better as a team instead of feeling like we're stepping on each other's toes and that kind of thing. So that's Chapter 3. And unless anybody else wants to add anything, we can move on for tonight. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to exit Committee of the Whole? And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Okay.
And Item 4 on our agenda will be a presentation from Ms. Whister from the Counseling Department.
Okay. So, good evening, gentlemen and女士. My name is Cora Whister. I am the supervisor of the school council. I am set to retire according to Article 1, so I'm the third committee member of the school district. This is Mr. Rock. So I wanted to present tonight. Can you just say what's new in the council office? I'm really proud of the council office and what it has accomplished. At the end, towards the end of the year, last year, I was told by two of my four counselors that they were waiting. One was going on to secondary education, Front Stars Program for RC, BC. And one was going into private practice. And that's scary when you're losing half your team, especially when you were proud of the team you built. And I knew that the students and the parents felt really comfortable with the group of counselors I had. And then one of the things that happened is, I was able to hire two people with experience. And the great part about that is it's only gotten better. And it went from being a really good department to, I'm going to tell you, I think it was one of the best in South Jersey before the beginning. So I'm really happy and proud of the group that I'm leading and know that everybody hired for my spot as the president of the school. So I'm bringing up one of my new members along with four of our seniors, at the Dorney Board of the, I, Mrs. Pallo, and Kelsey Randolph. They're going to tell you about something that Mr. Adams, when Mr. Adams was first hired, worked at the high school and at Sharp. And one of the things I really wanted to get going is, we have seniors who have to go through an interview process in order to become senior mentors. And they mentor our freshmen. But they're about to, as a matter of fact, they just finished mentoring them in health classes and studying through, so they have their leadership every E-period. And then they're put in a disqualification lot along with freshmen. But they just finished the health part of it. So I really would like to see them reach out and work with our younger students in the elementary school where I just see there's such a need and they look at these guys like they're rock stars. And so it's really, we progress that. We started with Sharp. I'm going to bring up Mr. Adams just so. Here's my committee council office and all our school spirit and you can see. So this is all beside the end. Kyler Smith is next. Mr. Adams is in the middle, next to Mr. Freeman. Donna Willis is my second grade, she's phenomenal. And then, okay.
I'm going to let our seniors do most of the speaking, but I've been publicated fifteen years now. And every program that I've ever been a part of usually is measured by percentages. You know, 5% increase here, 10% increase here, attendance here, festivals here. We don't have a way to age them in regards to statistics, but I'm fond of the way I'm already with, I'm engaging with all the members of smiles that the Sharp kids have every single time our seniors come to visit. I'm engaging with all the members of the time. The Sharp kids say, "Mr. Adams, when are they coming back?" "When are they coming back?" "When are they coming back?" And this isn't just with our fifth graders, we developmentally are the ones that are really aware. This is coming from our kindergartners as well, the ones that are, you know, starting out fresh. They see what the board models are doing for them. We've had two amazing visits with our third actually this Friday, so if you guys have visited one, that's right around the left third here, if you get there, be part of the amazing presentation, amazing experience. I think the pictures again are going to show a little bit more about what our young students are getting the ultimate goal to. And I remember Ms. Whister and I have been talking about this, is for this to not only be a part of Sharp Elementary, but if we can all figure out a way to make it work, scheduling, the number of students to really spread this in every single elementary school that we have here, and have them all really, really benefit from their new leadership. So without further ado, I think the real proof in putting the company in East Door maybe, we have roughly twenty-three that visit each time. I could be anything of one of them, but East Door maybe is a good, a solid set. But.
Well, now I'm just in there. Okay. I'm in there. Thanks, Mike. Okay. That's good. Okay. Hi, I'm Morgan. I wanted to share an interaction that I had with a second grader on our first and second trips to Sharp that kind of impacted me and that I know impacted the kid himself. So when we were out there, I decided to go over to the playground and play with the fourth graders. And I noticed a kid sitting by himself on the bench. So I decided to go over and I talked to him, and he had a notebook in his hand, and I was like, "What's in your notebook?" And he was like kind of hesitant at first, and he was like, "Oh, it's my art." And I asked him if I could see anything, and he, once again, was hesitant, and he was like, "No, I don't really like showing people." So I just thought I'd ask him why, if he was willing to share. And he said that he doesn't like sharing his art with people because nobody ever asks him to see it. So I was kind of like, okay, I'll just leave it alone. We just had a conversation about his family, where they go on vacation and all of this stuff. And then the next time we went back, he came up to me with this like huge smile, and he had this big notebook in his hand, and I asked him what it was. And he came back and he had all of his art that he's ever drawn from like, I guess, whatever he started drawing to second grade. And he was so excited to show me all of the art that he had. And when I asked him, I was like, "Oh, why do you feel comfortable showing me?" He was like, "Well, because you care." And it kind of impacted me because it showed me that even the littlest thing that I just wanted to know what was in his notebook, really, he went home, he thought about me asking him, and he thought to bring something when I was coming back to show me. So it showed that my little question impacted his life and it impacted me because then I realized that even the littlest things I do could play such a big role in a little kid's life.
All right. So my name is Pocket. And so the first time I went, I kind of was hanging out with a few different kids. And I found this one first grader who was kind of like, he had like a troubled past. He'd been through like five different elementary schools already, and he was only in first grade. And so Mr. Adams had kind of told me about him previously, and so I knew that like this kid had gone through some things. And at first, he was kind of shy and like reluctant to play. He was just like sitting in the corner with his face against the fence, like he didn't even like talk or look to me. And so I kind of like just sat down, I started talking to him. Eventually, I walked away and went to play Legos, and he followed me over. We were playing Legos together. And so then like it started to develop, and like he actually started to like talk to me a little bit. And like at the end, he gave me a high five, and that like made me feel so good because at the beginning, he was so hesitant to even like talk to me or look at me. And at the end, he was like giving me a high five and actually like talking to me. And like the next time, we were playing tag, and he was playing with the other kids too. And it's like made me see that like, even though I'm like just a seventeen-year-old kid that goes to high school, like I can make a difference in somebody's life, like, yeah.
Hi, I'm Patrick Curly, obviously a senior leader at the high school. After two trips to Sharp, and now a third on Friday, I never thought I could have such a big impact on little kids' lives, just through simple things like games, sports, and just conversations. There was a little boy I met the first time we went. The first time was a little free, they didn't know why we were there, they didn't really know what we were doing, but they kind of started loosening up, having more fun as we went on. And there was a little boy who was very shy, he was kind of like, we were playing basketball, and he was like coming over, but then like leave and come back. But then towards the end, he started really opening up and talking to us. And then the second time he came back, he came up to us, asking us to play basketball, asking if we were playing kickball again, which we did the last time. And it was kind of just, I never felt like through such little things, like you could impact a little kid's lives so much. And it's just like so cool. It makes me feel better that like, I felt like I didn't even do anything after, but to see him smile, to see him remember us, it's like, wow, like maybe he went home like knowing, when's the next time we're coming back and that I could really have such a big impact with doing so little. So it's just really cool to like have this interaction multiple times, and now again on Friday, yeah.
Is this tall enough? Am I short? No, I'm fine, okay. To piggyback off of what everybody else said, we make an impact in their lives, but they also make a big impact in our lives. I know for the days that we go over there, sometimes we can, some seniors may have a test a period before, a test a period after. And just going over there, playing with them, seeing them smile, run around with them, playing tag, or whatever game they want to make up that day, it makes us feel better. We go back with a smile on our face. We go back feeling like, wow, we feel like a kid again. And we release all that stress that seniors have in this time.
23 that visit each time. I could be anything of one of them, but D-score maybe it was a setup, but.
Well, now I'm just embarrassed. Okay, um, I'm embarrassed. Thanks, Mark. Okay, that's good. Okay. Hi, I'm Morgan. I wanted to share an interaction that I had with a second grader on our first and second trips to Sharp that kind of impacted me and that I know impacted the kid himself. So, when we were out there, I decided to go over to the playground and play with the fourth graders. And I noticed a kid sitting by himself on the bench. So, I decided to go over and I talked to him. He had a notebook in his hand and I was like, "What's in your notebook?" And he was like, kind of hesitant at first and he was like, "Oh, it's my art." And I asked him if I could see anything and he, once again, was hesitant. He was like, "No, I don't really like showing people." So, I just thought I'd ask him why, if he was willing to share. And he said that he doesn't like sharing his art with people because nobody ever asks him to see it. Uh, so I was kind of like, "Okay, I'll just leave it alone." We just had a conversation about his family, where they go on vacation and all of this stuff. And then, the next time we went back, he came up to me with this like huge smile. And he had this big notebook in his hand and I asked him what it was. And he came back and he had all of his art that he's ever drawn from like, I guess, whatever he started drawing to second grade. And he was so excited to show me all of the art that he had. And when I asked him, I was like, "Oh, why do you feel comfortable showing me?" He was like, "Well, because you care." And it kind of impacted me because it showed me that even the littlest thing that I just wanted to know what was in his notebook, really, he went home, he thought about me asking him, and he thought to bring something when I was coming back to show me. So, it showed that my little question impacted his life and it impacted me because then I realized that even the littlest things I do could play such a big role in a little kid's life.
All right, um, so my name is Pocket. Um, and so, the first time I went, I kind of was hanging out with a few different kids. And I found this one first grader who was kind of like, he had like a troubled past. He'd been through like five different elementary schools already and he was only in first grade. And so, Mr. Adams had kind of told me about him previously and so I knew that like this kid had gone through some things. And at first, he was kind of shy and like reluctant to play. He was just like sitting in the corner with his face against the fence, like he didn't even like talk or look to me. And so, I kind of like just sat down. I started talking to him. Eventually, I walked away and went to play Legos and he followed me over. We were playing Legos together. And so then, like it started to develop and like he actually started like talking to me a little bit. And like at the end, he gave me a high five and that like made me feel so good because at the beginning, he was so hesitant to even like talk to me or look at me. And at the end, he was like giving me a high five and actually like talking to me. And like the next time, we were playing tag and he was playing with the other kids too. And it's like made me see that like, even though I'm like just a 17-year-old kid that goes to high school, like I can make a difference in somebody's life. Like, yeah.
Hi, I'm Patrick Curly, obviously a senior leader at the high school. Um, after two trips to Sharp, I'm now a third on Friday. I never thought I could have such a big impact on little kids' lives, just through simple things like games, sports, and just conversations. There was a little boy I met the first time we went. The first time was a little free, they didn't know why we were there, didn't really know what we were doing. But they kind of started loosening up, having more fun as we went on. And there was a little boy who was very shy. He was kind of like, we were playing basketball and he was like coming over, but then like leave and come back. But then, towards the end, he started really opening up and talking to us. And then, the second time he came back, he came up to us, asking us to play basketball, asking if we were playing kickball games, which we did the last time. And it was kind of just, I never felt like through such little things, like you could impact a little kid's lives so much. And it's just like so cool. It makes me feel better that like, I felt like I didn't even do anything after, but to see him smile, to see him remember us, it's like, wow, like maybe he went home like knowing, when's the next time we're coming back and that I could really have such a big impact with doing so little. So, it's just really cool to like have this interaction multiple times. And now, again on Friday, yeah.
Is this tall enough? Am I short? No, I'm fine, okay. Um, to piggyback off of what everybody else said, we make an impact in their lives, but they also make a big impact in our lives. I know for the days that we go over there, sometimes we can, some seniors may have a test a period before, a test a period after. And just going over there, playing with them, seeing them smile, run around with them, playing tag, or whatever game they want to make up that day, it makes us feel better. We go back with a smile on our face. We go back feeling like, wow, we feel like a kid again. And we release all that stress that seniors have in this time. Um, one girl that I had an interaction with, her name was Ozzy. She was sitting towards the outskirts of the class. She was still kind of interacting, but she mainly was, had her pen and was drawing in a notebook. So, I brought my drawing notebook in my book bag. So, I figured we exchanged art. And I felt really bad about myself because this fifth grader's art was amazing. I was like, where was I in fifth grade if I wasn't artist good? I don't, I don't know. But she just, she was so passionate about it and she was so quick to like show me. And her best friend came over and was like, "Yeah, she's a great artist." And I was like, "Wow, this, these kids are amazing." And I never want to stop coming here because if I can make an impact on them, like they make an impact on me, then I think we can make Collinswood and the other elementary schools just a better place to be in, especially for some of the kids who have like a little bit trouble, more troubled homes. So, yeah.
Ultimately, as I'm getting ready to leave, I thank you in just two times, we saw the positive impact both on the seniors and on the kids. And I really would like to see this get into all five of our elementary schools and then include Oakland and Woodland Schools this year. Because between them all, I already was going through the numbers, okay? So, we have 30 kids and if they divide, then we go to 510, and we go to two advisors, and if we didn't, you know, and every other. So, it's something that I hope continues to get supported and allowed to happen. Um, I think a lot of positive can come from just a simple interaction of bringing seniors to play with elementary schools.
Just one quick final thing, I know your time is precious. I think one other thing that I didn't even think of that could possibly happen out of this program is we're exposing some of our seniors to early education life. And I'm pleasantly surprised because it's one of the most beautiful career paths we have, as to how many people are now taking kind of a second thought thinking, hmm, this is possibly a direction I want to go. I know it's only been two times, but sometimes it just takes that one particular situation where you're really a part of your career path. And we've had several students talk to me a little bit further about my time in early education. And we actually have some even younger students that have been asking questions about it as well. So, possible careers are coming out of this as well. That's it, Dr. Williams. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. It's great to see the leadership and mentorship inspired by programs like these. And as always, it never ceases to amaze me how well-spoken our Collinswood students are. There's adults at this table who aren't as comfortable as these kids are speaking. So, it's always, it always impresses me, right? Me included. Next section on our agenda will be section five. Draw your attention, please, to future dates and miscellaneous information where various school closures and events are listed. Moving on to section six of our agenda is routine board business, where I will ask for a motion to approve the December 6, 2019, and January 6, um, I think I said, December 16, 2019, and January 6, 2020, board minutes. Is there a motion to approve those board minutes? Is there a second? All in favor? Section seven on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. Please stand and state your name and address, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items that are listed on the agenda. Additional, more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through the appropriate staff members and administrators. Is there any public comment?
Hi, Donna Helms, Mark Newby Elementary School. Do you have to see my address?
You got it.
Yeah, 21 East Nobles, Kansas. Oh, you got it. So, I just wanted to say it's very apropos following this group when talking about the difference that people can make in children's lives. I'm going to try to do this without crying. I cry every single time. But I just want to thank Dr. Oswald and I want to thank the Board of Education members, Elizabeth Yuccas here, for all you do for transgender youth and gender non-conforming youth. I am so impressed, the work that you put into the transgender support plan and the transgender transition plans. This is a population of kids that suffer a higher rate of bullying, high rate of suicide. And you heard people talking about, if adults believe in them, if people believe in them and support them, it makes all the difference. And that's what you are doing with this plan. You were saying, "I welcome you, I support you, and I celebrate you, and that makes all the difference." And I want to say thank you for all your hard work in this space.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. Is there other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to section eight on our agenda is our superintendent's report by Dr. Oswald.
Okay, in, under section eight, we have the enrollment reports. So, you have year-over-year as well as a five-year summary of enrollment. The school safety reports are also listed there for you, the suspension reports, under section 8.03. The HIV anti-bullying report as of last Friday is listed under section 8.04. And there are no first readings of policies this month. So, that is it.
Thank you. And section nine on our agenda will be our student reports from our student board members.
For academics, we have two senior television production students, Holden Correa Fisher and Rafe Swineheart. They had their film selected for screening at the State Film Festival. Holden created a documentary on the Scottish Ballet Theater, and Rafe made a film titled, "The House That Night Built." Also, sophomore Megan Bailey was elected as a state board representative of the New Jersey Association of Student Councils. She's only the third person in school history to be selected for this position. The CHS Student Council also won a top project award from the NJASC for their classmates compliments project conducted that last school year. And Mr. Lannan's environmental bio classes are working on the unless contest, in accordance with the Philadelphia Zoo to raise awareness on endangered species. For athletics, the wrestling team had their senior night match last Friday against Sterling, and they downloaded the entire time. After winning the triple jump at the Ocean Breeze Freedom Games, senior Kevin Cavalier achieved a number one ranking in the triple jump in the state of New Jersey. Kevin also moved up to number eight all-time on the South Jersey indoor triple jump list. Junior Fiona Beisewitz set a new school record in the high jump with a jump of 10 feet. And finally, on January 12, the girls' basketball team held their annual special Olympics clinic for local special needs youth.
For extracurricular activities, senior Noah McAllister, junior Paul Bowe, and sophomores Corbin Roth and Martin Rooney were selected to the 2020 Olympic Conference Honors Band. Mrs. Lang's crafts class held an art show in town to benefit the Australian Wildlife Relief Fund and may raise $500. Several students from the Social Justice Club attended the Women's March in Philadelphia on January 18. And students in our 18 through 21-year-old program made and chopped off 70 snack packs for the Unforgotten Haven Chemo Today Program, which brings comfort and support to those who go through chemotherapy treatment.
Thank you for your reports. And you're welcome to stay, but you're also free to leave. Moving on to section 10 on our agenda is our Business Administrator Board Secretary Report given by Ms. Coleman.
This evening, I'm asking for approval for the December 2019 monthly transfers, the December 2019 Secretary of Treasuries Report, cash reports, the December 2019 Student Activity Financial Report, and the November and December Food Service Financial Statements, as well as a list of the purchase orders that were issued for the month of January, and a list of warrants to be paid tomorrow. Thank you.
The next section on our agenda is section 11, Buildings, Grounds and Finance Committee. And our chairperson presenting is Ms. Celia.
The Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Tonight, I am asking for the approval of items 11.02 through 11.28. 02 is approval of the transfers. The next one is board secretary certifications of no over expenditures. 04, board certification of no over expenditures. Continue. 11.05, approval of secretary and treasurer's reports. 11.06, approval of student activities report. 11.07, the approval of the food services financial statement. 11.08, purchase orders. 11.09, warrant approvals. 11.10, an item regarding resurfacing the Collinswood High School track. 11.11, revision to the 2019 and 2020 IDEA amendment. And 11.12 through 11.19 are shared services agreements with Oakland. 11.20 is a shared service maintenance agreement with Mount Ephrim. 11.21, a shared service athletic services agreement with Woodland. 11.22 is approval of the 2020, 2021 tuition rates. 11.23 is an equipment sales bid. 11.24 is a donation from American Water Company. And 11.25 to 11.28 are use of facilities by various clubs, including the CHS Beatmakers Club, who is going to hold a fundraiser led by Mr. Ingram on May 16. And there's also Good Shepherd's Track Program, the Collinswood Rotary Club, use of the high school library for a Easter egg hunt, and Book Festival on 11/28. And finally, 11.33, I'm asking for approval of items 11.01 to 11.28.
Thank you, Ms. Celia. Is there a motion for items 11.02 through 11.28? Is there a second? Other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Caden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except there's a mark with a couple X for our state.
Ms. Wood? Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Uh, section 12 on our agenda will be presented by Ms. Caden, the chairperson of the Curriculum Committee.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Tonight, looking for approval for item 12.02, which are elementary school field trips, including one to Colonial Pennsylvania Plantation, where Zaynor third graders will participate in the 18th century colonial life, while exploring things like farm life and candle making. 12.03, middle school field trips. Some of interest are combined middle school and high school orchestra trip to Haddonfield at the beginning of February to collaborate on a side-by-side concert with them, which seems very cool. 12.04, high school field trips. There are six high school field trips, including one to, for the art choir and TV programs to attend the Teen Arts Festival at Camden County College in March. And Mr. King's 10th through 12th grade art students go to their annual trip to the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York City at the end of May. 12, items 12.05 is a senior privilege for a student to finish out the school year here. He's a 12th grader and the privilege is contingent upon satisfactory attendance, conduct, and academic progress. 12.06 is the approval of out-of-district home instruction placements for a middle school student. 12.07 are out-of-district home instruction placements for some high school students. 12.08 is the approval of the 2021, 2020, 2021 high school course proposals. Is that, just for clarification, Dr. Oswald, is that just the high school proposals, not the middle school? Okay. So, the, some of the programs or the classes that are being added are AP Environmental Science, Honors Programming, Intro to Building and Trade, or to Building Trades, excuse me, AP Computer Science and Cybersecurity contingent upon a grant that they have applied for to get more classes in computer science and a heritage Spanish class. And then, item 12.09 is the approval of, for the transgender support plan and transgender transition plans that Ms. Helms had spoke about earlier, that the, these documents will be used by counselors, teachers, and administrators in all of the schools. And there's been a lot of input from all of the people involved to really make this a useful document and one that makes sure that the kids get seen. So, looking for approval of items 12.01 to 12.09 today.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for items 12.01 through 12.09? Is there a second? Other questions or comments from board members?
Could I make a comment about the transgender support plan? I work with high school students across Camden County and Burlington County in a variety of school districts. And the, one of the hardest things is even well-meaning schools don't have a coordinated plan for support and communication for students. And you can imagine how devastating it might be to be halfway through your day and then be addressed by the wrong name or the wrong pronouns, and sometimes throws the rest of the week and sometimes worse. So, I am thrilled to see this plan be so thorough. And I have a feeling there'll be a number of districts tapping on the door to borrow this from us. So, thank you for whoever was involved in that.
Other comments or questions from board members? Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Caden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except item 12.02, we're abstaining.
Ms. Wood?
Yes, except the item 12.04, we're abstaining.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
The next section on our agenda is section 13, our Personnel Committee Report presented by chairperson Ms. Miller.
No, when I agreed to be chair of this committee, I completely forgot how many action items there was. So, bear with me. The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. For item 13.02, we're seeking approval for retirement, Mr. Greenberg, elementary school art teacher. 13.03, resignation. 13.04, an unpaid leave of absence. 13.05, EDP resignation from the high school human relations club. 13.06, 13.07, and 13.08 are FMLA approvals. 13.09 is an unpaid leave. 13.10 is a transfer from a 10-month high school secretary to 12-month effective July 1, 2020. 13.11 is a 10-month contract for a high school secretary effective September 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. 13.12 is a preschool part-time instructional assistant effective February 1, 2020 through June 30, 2020. 13.13 is an elementary long-term sub effective March 23, 2020 through June 14, 2020, pending return of the regular classroom teacher. 13.14 is an elementary long-term sub effective March 16 through May 17, 2020, or pending return of the regular teacher. 13.15 is a high school English long-term sub. 13.16 is a speech therapist long-term sub. 13.17 is an English teacher revised contract. 13.18, language arts teacher revised contract. 13.19 is special education teacher revised contract. For 13.20, we're seeking approval for a part-time custodian. 13.21, we're seeking approval for additional after-school STEM club for girls in grades three through five at Mark Newby. 13.22, high school non-athletic EDP stipend revised. 13.23, high school athletic EDP stipends. 13.24 is the 2019, 2020 high school band volunteers. 13.25, 2019, 2020 fall and winter athletic event personnel. 13.26, substitute rates for 2019, 2020. 13.27 is the 2019, 2020 high school accountability student tutor rate. 13.28 is the 2020 summer high school secretary hours. 13.29, substitutes and tutors. 13.30 is a travel expense form related to professional development. And 13.33, we're seeking approval for. And thirteen point three-three, we're seeking approval for items thirteen point zero-one through thirteen point three-zero.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion for items thirteen point oh-one through thirteen point three-zero? Is there a second? Other questions or comments from the board members? Roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stouts?
Yes, except those are in March with a double asterisk for our extension.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes. Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Section fourteen on our agenda is our Policy and Miscellaneous section presented by Dr. Oswald.
Item fourteen oh-one is the HIB report from the previous month. That's the only thing on this, in this section. I would like to just point out, though, we had a lot of students earlier this evening that spoke, and I think it's important that you realize, that everybody realize where these students came from. So, earlier we had Patrick spoke about the, Patrick, Kelsey Pocket, and Morgan spoke about the shark visits. Patrick was, Patrick is a Troy student with us. Kelsey is a transfer student. She probably arrived, I'm going to guess, three years ago, maybe four years ago, but probably three years ago. Pocket is a former Zainor student who went all the way through our system up to middle school, through the middle school into the high school. And Morgan is actually an Oakland student. And then our two student reps over here tonight, Christian is a Woodland student, Alexa is an Oakland student. They come from everywhere. So, these are not the typical, sometimes the community believes some of our student leaders all come from one school, or one or two of our schools. They come from everywhere. And when they get to the high school, I think they're equally impressive regardless of where they started their education. So, I think that, I thought that was important to point out. Back to my fourteen, section fourteen, fourteen oh-one is the only item we're looking for approval.
And is there a motion for item fourteen oh-one? And a second? Other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stouts?
Yes, except those are in March with a double asterisk for our extension.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes. Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Section fifteen on our agenda is our second opportunity for public participation. Please stand as before and state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Again, the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. Other comments from the public?
Good evening. I'm Andrew Hus. I live at three twenty-eight Virginia Avenue here in Collingswood. I wanted to thank the board and Dr. Oswald for your recent presentation on library media services and engaging our community to have a deeper discussion about the library services offered in Collingswood. As you know, many community members have spoken up about the divestment from libraries in our community. We are very concerned that elementary schools in our town do not have a library special. And instead, these important skills are being covered in only the most minimal ways. We in Collingswood see school districts in nearby towns such as Oakland providing library services that our children are being denied. Some parents, such as myself, have chosen to forego the Collingswood schools for this reason. My son attends a private school where he has ongoing and regular access to libraries, and this is the highlight of his week. His school administration prioritizes libraries by providing a weekly library special where students can browse and select from a wide array of circulating books that appeal to a variety of interests and reading levels and are accessible to all students. While Collingswood has identified classroom libraries as a replacement for an actual library, parents can see at back-to-school night and other events that these are comprised of bins of mixed paperback books in most rooms, containing books often in poor condition or outdated. They are hard to browse, crammed into a small space, and create more work for our teachers to keep organized without a digital catalog. Moreover, without a standard weekly time for checkouts, many kids do not have the regular opportunity to check them out without specific request. Some parents have even had to make specific teacher requests to allow kids to take home books at all. This restrictions relegates library programming to the advantage of only our most privileged students, who can attend private school, and denies it to our most important residents, our children. Collingswood has invested much energy in attempting to resolve equity issues in our community, but we have continued to retain the huge inequity between how the high school library is funded and staffed, and the minimal funding received for earliest readers to develop enjoyment of reading and connect books of their own choice beyond just the basal readers. Researchers have identified that the choice of books from a wide array, the kind of choice that can only happen in a well-stocked library, is a major predictor of success as a reader, as evidenced by increased test scores and higher grades. One segment of the population that most concerns me and Collingswood is our immigrant and Spanish-speaking population. Title III funds should be utilized to increase library selection of home language books to help bilingual and immigrant students sustain their skills in their other language, which may be their first or second. Students need a library media special to develop a relationship with the librarian who can curate books based on student interests. Collingswood should be setting the bar for cultural proficiency and embracing diversity by providing increased access to Spanish language and home language books for students to read at home, not just at school. This curation would be the task of a full-time librarian and assigned to our elementary buildings, buildings that libraries, with libraries that are currently languishing with lack of funds at best, and/or no longer in existence at worst, such as at Tatum. I would recommend that you listen to the many community members who are reaching out month after month about library services. We are asking you to reconsider your library-deficient funding model for elementary schools at this pivotal time. Allocate more funding earmarked for circulating books for children to check out and read at home. Provide two full-time librarians and a library special. And institute regular bi-weekly trips to the public library for the Tatum children. Thank you for your time.
Hi. I'm Eleanor Dill, twenty-seven, East Browning Road. Just hold it. I want to thank you for your time. I have been here before with the CI group over the issue of the libraries, particularly in Tatum School, where my grandson is a student. But today I'm here on a related issue. I wasn't able to be here for the December meeting, and thank goodness for the retrospect for providing information and an account of some of the highlights, the highlights in this case. Even now, I get very angry thinking about it. When I read the account of how one of our members was completely disowned by one of your members, Mr. Stouts, I just really wanted to scream. And I say to you, new members, please, remember that you serve us, that we work with you. We are not the enemy, and we should always be treated with respect, as we treat you. And I say to you, Mr. Stouts, if you're wasting your time, maybe it's time for you to step down. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Okay, I will add that the concern of the library advocates is appreciated, and we do receive monthly comments about this. And although our library and literacy programs may look different from what many of us remember as children, the board and the administration is confident that we do provide the literacy, media, and technology skills necessary for our students. That being said, public comment is always important to help keep us aware of public concerns and to also help us improve.
Are there other comments from the public?
So, as discussed, before we adjourn, as discussed in our committee of the whole, our meetings are very procedural and structured. That's to ensure orderly public decision-making, and as said, a chance to give all board members a voice to be heard. So, to put a more sort of human, personal spin on it, we decided to quickly end each meeting with the committee chairs kind of making a brief statement about what have we done for children today. So, I will ask Ms. Celia to start.
Admittedly, the finance buildings and grounds report is not the most exciting, but the one thing I do want to highlight, and goes to something we've been talking about for several years, is we're going to be putting out to bid again the track and the tennis courts. Tennis courts work soon, so hopefully we'll have that up and running before the end of the summer, ideally. Thank you.
And Ms. Kayden, from the curriculum committee?
So, my committee is the easiest one to answer, the what did we do for kids today, because it's curriculum. But the one I wanted to highlight the most, which we've highlighted a couple of times this meeting already, but it's a pretty important thing, is the transgender student support and transition plans. A lot of work went into this, and I'm just so glad to see that we have a uniform plan, as Sarah said, so that, you know, it's very easy for a name tag to be forgotten or something like that. And now there's a checklist so that teachers can go through and make sure that they haven't forgotten anything before, and they know how to address the students, and there's a plan for how to let other students know what's going on and things like that. So, it's really very well thought of, and I'm really proud of the district for putting that together. So, thank you, Dr. Oswald, and all of the child study team, and the teachers, and the students, and the parents that were involved in that. It's really amazing. So, that's mine for tonight.
And Ms. Miller, personnel?
I'd like to highlight professional development. Sometimes I think that goes under the radar and maybe can be seen as just something to do. But when we talk about professional development and how it enhances our administrators and our staff's skill set, it keeps them current. And so, if they're current with their skill set, they're able to pass that down to our children, ensuring their success. And in line with what I didn't even think about until now, when Ms. Wister did her presentation, or Ms. Adams with the students, that's also a form of professional development, albeit on a student level. But anytime we have a chance to encourage that, when it's provided, I think that that's what we should push. And so, that's my layman's term on what we do for students in terms of professional development, how that whole thing comes kind of full circle. That's it.
Great. And thanks to all of you for taking that extra step, and thanks to the board, administration, and our public for continually coming out to these meetings and commitment to the students of Collingswood. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.[1337.83]